Okay, 5:30. We will open the meeting for Tuesday, May 24th, 2022, Halifax Board of Selectmen Meeting. The meeting is being taped by Area 58 and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, I would need a motion to approve the agenda for tonight, May 24th, 2022. The only thing I think we should do is take out of order the signature authority and put it after we reorganize the board.
So moved.
So, a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we need to approve selectmen meeting minutes from September 8th, 2021, and March 22nd, 2022. You guys can approve this if you want. You can go back and watch the videos before we do so. I did talk to council. We need a board to approve the minutes, so it's up to you whether you want to approve now or if you want to wait, but we do.
I did watch the meeting, so...
So, I would need a motion to approve the two meetings.
I'll make a motion to approve the selectmen minutes, September 8th, 2021, March 22nd, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then, I move to affirm approval of the following warrants and commitments. This is great that we can do these. We don't have to do any parrots. Okay. Vendor warrant number 98 for $85,881.22. School warrant number 99 for $736,927.70. Payroll warrant number 100 for $385,907.82. Vendor warrant number 101 for $147,975.71. Withholding warrant number 102 for $130,852.40. Vendor warrant number 103 for $103,950.21. Ambulance commitment from 3/21 to 4/24/22 for $50,631.13. And the ambulance commitment from 4/25 to 5/1/22 for $20,463.74.
I make a motion to approve the warrants. What's that?
Just say so moved.
Oh, so moved is even better. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to affirm payment of the following selectmen bills. Brooks and Durensis for $19,277.69. KP Law for $1,344.51.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. I move to approve the following warrants and commitment. Payroll warrant number 104 for $383,99. Vendor warrant number 105, $55,789.39. Withholding warrant number 106 for $130,779.29. And the mobile home fee, number 5, for $5,160.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to affirm, approve the following selectmen bills. Uh, we just did that, so we'll do that one. National Grid for $907.50. Armory Engineering for $1,226.53. Office expense for Amazon for $1,948. WB Mason for $422.50. A law bill for Boston appraisal consulting, $7,687.50. Brooks and Durensis for $28,331.88. The town report for Harry B. Harding, $2,793.71. WB Mason again for the selectmen account, $390.1. Law bill for Relance, $74.26. And then William August Esquire law bill for $1,610.
Can I so move all those?
Yep.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll have to sign all those later. Okay, perfect. Okay, so, all that is done, fun stuff. Next is to reorganize the board. Obviously, we have a very new board. We have three people, that's fabulous. Um, so we need to make a chair, a vice chair, and a clerk. So we just need a motion on the table for a chair, and then...
I make a motion for Ashley to be the chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we need a vice chair.
Is this where you step back?
I would move Alex to be vice chairs because he sat on a board for.
Sure. I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And that leaves you clerk, so I move Jonathan to be clerk.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Which brings us to the signature authority. So right now, we have one person who comes in and signs everything, it's just easier than all of us having to come up here multiple times a week and do so. Um, I had been doing it as the clerk.
Bring it on.
If you could still do it.
Sure.
Um, so I would move Jonathan to be our signature authority.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then our liaison list. So, this is so much fun. I think we should go backwards on this and we should start with the union contracts because then they kind of sum them up in a thought, makes sense to fill in with who. I took police officers and sergeants. We have the school. Jonathan, I don't know how you feel about taking on the school, I know you do a lot there, it might be a good spot for you.
Yeah, I know you guys have more contract negotiation experience than I do.
So the school, you don't really negotiate with them, the school committee does, but you're just our liaison for that?
Sure, let's do it.
If you're okay with that?
Yep.
Make a motion?
Second.
All those in favor? Um, then we have firefighters. So, the way we did it last year, which we don't have to do it this way, but just telling how we do it. One person took highway cemetery mixed unit and one person took firefighters. But that is up to how we want to handle it, so I'm up for discussion on that.
I'm fine with it.
Sure.
Is there, Alex, is there one of those or any of those that you would like to take since we, Jonathan and I both have them?
Um, I'll do highway cemetery mixed unit.
Okay.
It's like a fantasy draft.
Alright, so that leaves firefighters. Uh, that's up to Jonathan if you want to do firefighters and start negotiating. I'm cool with that.
Sure, I think I can handle that.
Yeah.
Sure, I'll make a motion to be the liaison for firefighters.
I don't even know if we need to motion.
Do we need a motion, Pam?
Um, no, no, no.
What we'll do is we'll fill it all in and then we'll just make a motion to approve the liaison list.
Sure thing.
Make it easier. So, that brings us to the rest of this, which will be fun. So, and we'll control officer. I feel like should probably go with police and sergeant, so I will do that. Cable TV advisory, which one of you are very, uh, technical?
Oh, that's Jonathan.
You think so?
Jonathan, that's background.
Do I have cable? I don't even know if I have cable.
Who has cable in one?
I know.
Capital planning, Alex, that something has your name on it?
Yep, I'll do that one.
Um, cemetery, Alex, we're gonna put that on YouTube because you're negotiating that. Chief procurement officer, I will do that one.
Chief procurement officer would be the town administrator?
Right, but for now, I'll do it because remember we had that whole conversation in that other meeting that we needed somebody who would...
Okay, okay, that's cool.
So could that switch over once we get?
Yeah, it's gonna end up being the TA.
Okay.
But we just had a couple of things we had to fix on that.
Okay.
Uh, finance committee.
I'll do that one.
You're a good manager, Charlie Brown.
Thanks, Alex. Financial management team.
I'll do that one.
Really?
Yep.
You can put numbers on it, Alex. Uh, Halifax, I'm just kidding.
Should I do fires?
You should do fire.
Yep.
I can do the emergency management. Fireworks, anybody up for that one? It's a fun one.
I love fireworks.
There you go. Who doesn't?
Done safely.
Highway will be you, Alex.
Yep.
Holidays in Halifax, I can do. Uh, MBTA advisory board. Either one of you would be great on that one.
You sure?
I think you guys would be phenomenal on, yeah.
So is it one takes it and the other one's the alternate? Is that the deal?
Yeah, that'd be great.
I'll be the alternate.
Alright, I guess I'll be the guy. Sure, so I'll take the board, Pam, and Alex can be the alternate.
Um, I've been working with Steve Littlefield's Memorial Day celebration this year, so I don't mind keeping that.
Okay.
My partner links.
I'll do that one.
OCPC delegate. Wait, why is the, oh, okay. Jonathan, I think you'll be awesome with this.
Yeah, sure.
I think we need an alternate for that. And it's not on here.
Well, you, okay, you were the alternate, okay?
Right, and then, because it was Troy, I took it as the alternate. So Jonathan will take it now, I'll take the alternate.
So, okay, so he's OCPC delegate, is that?
It's gonna be Jonathan.
That's me.
And I'll be his alternate if he can't be there.
Okay, and then, what about the board? Is that Jonathan?
I don't know who's been doing that, because none of us have been doing that.
I know.
Okay, I'll do it. Alex, do you want to be the alternate?
Uh, sure.
For Plumas County?
Yep.
Uh, Plumas County Health Insurance Plan.
That has Alex written on it.
Yeah, I don't know about that one.
I don't know, we hadn't had anyone on there to begin with.
So, so you don't want us to, we can skip that one. We'll pass over that until then, yes. Town government study.
It's called Plumas County Health Insurance Plan Trust Alternate.
But we never had a delegate.
We didn't have anyone on it, but we recall anything like that? Okay, so we'll just...
So we'll hold off on that, we'll look into it.
See what we can do and looking into it.
Town government study, anybody?
Town government study. Sure, what, just what's that entail, I guess?
When maybe that you just go and listen, which is not...
Yeah, I can, I can do that.
Um, I'll keep traffic safety. I'm already doing that with the chief, so I'm okay with that one. See how that shook out.
Just trying to do a quick head count.
By my math, I believe you're a full whistleblower too.
Me?
Yeah.
I love whistles. Can I bring like a train, like a slide one and a train?
Yeah, no.
Choo-choo?
We didn't have one last year.
Alright.
Alright, so I need a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen Liaison List for 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen Liaison List 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have two minutes before we open that hearing, so, uh, but then, I don't want to get into the line item transfer, it's gonna take longer than that, so we'll just go into this in a second. Oh, yes, it's gonna be on this folder. It's gonna be back here luckily, took it out of order. So we'll sign that, have Jonathan sign. Okay, so, like we, everyone has to do it. And then on the bottom, we put it down. Oh, we need an alternate signature person. I'll, I can stay the alternate. So I move for me to be the alternate signature.
Second.
Or I need a motion.
I'll make a motion, make Ashley discuss the alternate signature.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, I didn't realize we have to do it. My fault.
You get one mistake, that's it.
Well, it's really early on in the night, Jonathan. Alright, so you have to put you here and sign there, and then pass it to Alex, and then we'll give it back. Sure.
I'm gonna have you put your name on it before I sign it. No, that's me. This is me. Right here, Ashley, just making sure I'm signing the right spot here.
Yes, so you do, you're the primary, so right here.
Alright, and how about here? Vendor warrant?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay.
No. You're right, you're right, got it, ten bucks.
Okay. Says here they own my house?
Yeah, it's probably like that. You're signing your life leave?
Just checking.
To this board right now?
Okay, go for it.
Do we have to do this twice?
Need a department head?
I don't know what you want to do with that one. You tell us how you want us to handle that one right now.
So this one right here is to do then. So see, you know how you can...
You want us to do both?
So one of them says payroll, right? So, is this the payroll? Payroll one, so we've got Jonathan's primary, Ashley's the alternate, right? That's perfect. And then this is for the vendor one, so Jonathan, you're the one right here. So now, what's this one over here?
Yeah, so we don't have to go.
Cool.
Thanks, I already did that one.
There you go.
Alright, so it is 5:45. So, the Board of Selectmen will hold a continuation of a public hearing from, or started on, Tuesday, February 22nd, 2022, in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, 499 Plumas Street, Halifax, Mass, for the purpose of a transfer of all alcoholic beverage restaurant license from Willie's Cafe, BBA Happy Dragon Restaurant, to Dragon Lake Village, BBA Happy Dragon Restaurant. Um, Cecilia, you so? License holder and manager on property located at 327 Plumas Street, Halifax, Mass, 0233. So, we are reopening that, continuing the hearing right now. So, where do we, do you want to give us an update, where we stand with this?
Yes, and, uh, all the documents are already done, whatever the ABC made it, and everything's completed.
It's this one, I believe.
So, the holdup on this originally was getting the lending, the funding from the lender, right? Getting the, did you get that done?
Yes.
Did you close yet?
Uh, the bank is waiting for the settlement, but...
To give it a look?
To give it, okay.
And they're going to closing.
Okay.
Okay.
Sunday, if you'd like to shed more light on this.
Please do.
My name is Ted Wong, I'm the attorney for Lily, Lily Cafe.
Yep.
And, well, first of all, let me begin by congratulating your new selectmen on the election.
Thank you.
It's coming to mind, saying be careful what you wish for.
It's early, it's still early.
Yeah, it is early. So, um, what's happening is that, as you can see, that when Mrs. So applied for the license, it was really without our knowledge of him beginning the process because we were waiting to see what the development was. And it was continued many, many times, uh, and we couldn't support it because we weren't sure what was going on.
Right.
But now, at this point in time, I've actually contacted his lender and found out where the status was, and he was issued his letter of commitment, which is a big thing, what we were waiting for. And then part of the conditions to get that commitment was that he would have to have the licenses approved to be transferred, not enhanced, approved.
Okay.
And that's where we are at this point. The closing, based on his counsel, has asked us to have a closing maybe June 15th. So, tentatively, that's when the ownership will transfer.
Okay.
Uh, so that's where we stand at present, uh, between me and his counsel, that's what we, we're waiting for today's outcome. If it's a favorable decision to transfer licenses, then, in my opinion, the lender's commitment conditions have been met, which then fulfills one contract aspect of it, and then we move on to the next step. And it's kind of a bittersweet moment because we're approaching like almost 25 years in this town. As the only Chinese restaurant, it's been a really great experience, and we, Pam and us, we've become really so tight and the community members, and it just seems like yesterday we were before the board in the position.
Yeah.
And the town is really great, and it's, like I said, it's kind of a, a bittersweet moment, but it's time to move on because I think every year that goes by, I gain a pound, so. I had more here back then, so now it's kind of move on and pass it over to our successors.
Well, thank you for being so great to our town, we appreciate that.
Absolutely, we enjoyed having you here, and they will have big shoes to fill, so thank you guys for being.
The town's been great, the people here, it was what we hoped for.
I've been asked, are the scorpion bowls gonna be as good? That's what I was asked. Okay, we'll see.
So, I guess we would be looking for a motion to change for the liquor license based on the funding and the closing of the loan.
Alright, I will make a, a motion, so moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Everyone that comes anyway, you know, I'm stopped by many times.
Okay, so, if they sign it, so do you, once they sign it, I, I can stop the process with ABCC. So, and it, and now, it's not like it's mailed in, now darkness will get strained, so they're gonna get it that much quicker. So this will stop the process.
Sure.
So you guys are okay with me stopping the process with ABCC?
Oh, yeah. From, from, from that standpoint, from a legal standpoint, I'm okay with that because what's approved and gets submitted, they have to close. If they don't, we get their liquidated damages, uh, so I'm good with that. So I'm good with the money if we need to.
Sure.
Right, because then when we start the process by doing the investigation and all that, and so, for me to stop it with them, I don't even have to...
Right, that's why we showed it this time, I suppose, the other time, because there would have been premature for us to come and support that transfer until we at this stage.
You were, okay.
Okay, thanks, Pam.
Okay, um, so you guys, Jonathan, if you sign this, then I'll stop this process tomorrow.
Yeah, you're good, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, good luck.
Um, I don't know if it matters in general, but usually it goes share by share.
Share by share.
That's how they'll start typing everything up.
So you are the signature that always follows hers, Mr. Vice.
Thank you. Alright, on to the next fun item, Sandy, line item transfer request. Do you want me to just go one at a time? Okay. So the first line item transfer, we need to transfer $10,000 from the town administrator salary to our data processing account.
Uh, make a motion, so moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Um, 10,000.
Jonathan first.
Yep.
Then we need to transfer $11,900 from fire wages part-time to the fire chief's salary, this is to pay out his vacation time because he's leaving.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
We need to transfer $9,000 from the custodial, custodian payroll to our heating oil account.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, transfer the amount of $40,000 from our insurance expense to our law line.
One more time, Ash, on that one?
$40,000 from our insurance expense account to our law account.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then transfer the amount of $100 from park wages to park expenses.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor? Cemetery plots buyback?
The originals?
Thank you, thank you. Here you go, all signed. So, the Halifax Central Cemetery requests approval for the following transaction. Louis F. Davenport Jr. of 7 Harvard Street, Halifax, Mass, has requested that the town of Halifax buyback three plots in section C-112-347 for a total of $168.75 or $56.25 each pursuant to the Halifax Central Cemetery Rules and Regulations, Section 3. The lot or plot can be sold back to the, for the same amount they were originally purchased for. All pertinent paperwork is attached. So I am looking for a motion to have the town buyback the three plots.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Just a copy, Alex, do you need a copy of the transfer?
Is that mine? Oh, I have one.
You got one?
I don't think you have one, you just have to get the one.
Okay.
You only need the one. Vacation carryover request for police highway. We're going to hold until tomorrow, after executive session, so we're gonna pass over those.
Do you need a motion to pass over?
No.
Okay.
Uh, we need a motion to reappoint Steve Hayward to cemetery superintendent and burial agent? Yeah, we'll hold off on that. Isn't that, talking, oh, good. Um, did you talk to him about this?
Yeah.
He wants to be reappointed and all that fun stuff?
Yeah.
It has to be a special municipal employee to do this, so.
I'll make a motion to, uh, appoint, or I guess reappoint Steve Hayward as a cemetery superintendent.
Term to expire.
And burial agent, uh, term to expire 5/17/23.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody to sign this card?
Pam, coming at you.
Sorry, I kind of colored on the arrow there. Alright, and then we have talent bank form from Colby Sylvia, Elizabeth Calling, and Matthew Smith. Beautification Committee is recommending, what is that called?
Uh, recommending that, um, is recommending them to the, amendment to the board. It's recommending them to the board, and if you want to interview them, then we can do that on, on 14.
Okay, I think that's a great deal, set up interviews and talk with them like we've done in the past, if that's okay with you guys?
That works.
Perfect.
We've already appointed Colby Silva, and, um...
I felt like you had something to say there, so.
Do you want to speak to any of that name?
Well, Colby Silva is appointed, she's very, um, intuitive, her daughter's really into picking up litter, and they start the car to pick up litter, so.
Awesome.
Did the other person?
Um, yeah, I'm trying to think right now who it was, because my brain's on the...
What was the second name on that?
Elizabeth.
Elizabeth Callings and Matthew Smith?
Ma, and Matthew Smith is an applicant for beautification.
Just kidding.
Elizabeth Calling made it yesterday, and I'm trying to think who else we interviewed yesterday. It'll come to me in a minute.
Okay.
We did, that, that name's not here, and we did appoint Colby.
Okay, so, I mean...
Or ask her to be appointed, we agreed to it.
Okay. So let's, let's still bring them in, and then we'll reappoint them, and we'll let the beautification committee know that we're gonna bring in the other person in case they haven't spoken to them yet, in case they want to sit in on that. And then we have a talent bank form from Matthew Smith, which you want to be, it's up. Municipal and school building committee, and buildings facility needs committee, do we need people on those two boards?
Um, not at this time.
Not this time?
No.
Okay, so we'll just hold up.
What I do is I send it to the board, it's completely, I mentioned to them that they don't, they cannot use it at this time to let that person know.
Perfect.
And that's what I usually tell all the board committees, so.
Great, so we don't have to take any action on that. Appoint a board member as representative of, for the Halifax Old Colony Elder Services. Oh, right. Right, I forgot about that. Right, I forgot about that. Okay, it was Mr. Garen.
Okay. Just full disclosure, so my, I, my mother works for, um, Old Colony Planning Council. So I don't know if that's a help or a, or a conflict.
Made you a delegate of O C P C. Didn't we? All right, so that's not gonna work.
Yep.
My, uh, my business services their offices.
I thought we got rid of the conflict on the boards.
So when you, you look around, so I think, well, I can't be on it because I work there, so they won't let you do that. So.
Okay, so O C P C is going to stay me.
You don't want O C P C?
Jonathan will have to stay the alternate because I think your conflict is less of a conflict as a financial conflict with Alex.
Okay. Hold on, yep, is going to Ashley.
Yep, and then the alternate to that will be Jonathan. And then the Old Colony Elder Services is different than O C P C.
Okay.
So how do you feel about taking that, Jonathan?
I'd be fine with that.
All right.
Well, as long as.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
With the name Kathy Valerie.
What was it? Kathy what?
Kathy Valerie.
That was the other person?
Oh, the other person, okay.
Okay.
If she wants to be liaison.
Miss Trup wants to be the, no. Um, so I would move Jonathan to be our representative for Old Colony Elder Services.
I will second that.
All those in favor? Aye. All right.
Who that's, why is that different on the agenda than, oh, because it's not an actual?
It's, yeah, and we have to do some, it's different. Can I get a motion for the ambulance abatement for April twenty twenty-two for fourteen thousand six hundred fifty-five dollars and sixty-five cents?
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Six.
Click?
Oh, yeah.
Phone call at six.
Heads are watching the clock for us.
Oh, yeah, it's like right now.
Okay.
So.
Let's jump in.
How's that happening? We're calling, what do you want to do here? That's horrible.
Put my phone on the speaker?
Just press that button, type in the number, like, no one in the beginning.
Oh, sorry.
And then once you're done, press home.
Okay, town's not working. Sandy, we're gonna meet you.
Up front, Mr. Noah.
Todd?
Yeah?
Hi Todd, it's Ashley with town Halifax. How are you?
Good, what are you doing, Ashley?
Good, you're in our meeting. You also should know we're being recorded by Area Fifty-Eight. I just want you to know that. It's a public meeting. We have an audience here. You're here with the board of selectmen.
Wonderful, thank you.
Um, we also have Sandy here. So I guess we're talking about awarding the, what's what we're talking about right now?
We're talking about.
Solid waste.
Oh, we're at six o'clock, we're at six o'clock. Yeah, we're talking about solid waste contracts. Sandy, do you want to start?
Right, so, um, this year when we went to, we went to, um, waste management to get an extension of the contract that we had, we were looking for a two-year extension and the price came back very high. So we decided to hold off on awarding, on, on taking that extension and go out to bid. When we went out to bid, we got one, um, person who returned the bid and that bid was higher than the, um, extension was and it was the same company. So, um, we are running into an issue because the town of Halifax uses the bags. Um, most of the trash companies do not want to pick up the bags anymore. They want to use the toders because the truck has mechanical lift. Um, they're running into issues with workers' comp issues and also people just, the labors don't want to pick up trash in Halifax because it's the bags. They're too heavy and getting in and out of the truck all the time. So it's led for the companies to have a lot of workers' comp complaints. So it looks like the town of Halifax has to start tracking without adopting toders. Solid waste, um, I'm sorry, keep going, just solid waste. Waste Management has agreed to extend our contract for a year and work with the town of Halifax to, um, go to the toders. Um, we're talking about, they currently don't have trucks that will handle the thirty-five gallon toders. They're the smaller totes, um, because those would be easier for seniors and, and such. So we're talking about the forty-eight gallon toders. That will also encourage people to still recycle. Um, that's what the bags do because the bags, the idea behind the bags is the people who are creating the trash are the ones who are paying to get rid of the trash. So the problem with the toders is if you get the really big ones, people just load the stuff in. They don't have the incentive to recycle. So what we're looking at now is, um, the recommendation was to, um, go with Waste Management for one year. They agreed to the, um, the lower price that they had given us, um, before we went out to bid, which was nice, and work towards converting to toders. Did I do the, I summarized a good time. Todd, you want to add anything?
I, yeah, I, I would like to add a couple comments on there and, and this is just me talking as, as DEP is that the, you know, yes, the forty-eight toders are, um, a better option than the sixty-fours. Um, ultimately, where you're going to still cut your trash, which is a big part of the push for DEP right now because we are, um, in a situation where our landfill space is, uh, we're, uh, there is no new landfill being built. Uh, there's a handful left that are functioning. Um, and a majority of our trash is going to C M A T in this, in this region. However, there's also no new permits being issued for more combustion facilities. So that leaves us in a little bit of a bind. Halifax is one of my star towns in my district of Thirty-One Union that I look out for. And ultimately, you guys have the lowest pounds per household. You're hovering right around seven hundred pounds of household per year for trash, which is unbelievable. The second you get away from pay as you throw, it's going to go up a little bit. The big push is for thirty-five and I, I know what Waste Management is saying. I know they're saying that they can't service them. Well, they do it in Norval. Norval has thirty-five gallon carts and they do it there. Same program. It's pay, it's pay as you throw for anything extra. Nothing different about what I was, what I wanted to propose for Halifax. The issue when you go to a forty-eight is that you're going to now generate more trash. Um, and we have all the statistics to back it up. I, I'm working on that chart right now. Um, Kathy Merzow from Boston already has one made, but I'm gonna add Halifax into it. It's finished. She sends it to me. I talked to her today about this. You are going to see an increase in trash, number one. And number two, that's gonna, that's gonna be an increase, uh, in cost. Um, as well as you guys having the lowest pounds per household in my district, I would hate to see that happen. I would hate to see that go up. So I, I would like to, you know, I, I agree with holding off for a year so we can figure out a few things on the backend, which would be the billing of it, um, you know, the transition. There's a couple, a couple major details we do have to work on. Um, however, I would like to make sure that everyone on the board is actually open-minded to a discussion about having a thirty-five gallon toder rather than a forty-eight or sixty-four. That's the first part. The second part is grants. And this is the big part of my job right now. We're granting until June fifteenth. When you guys apply for grants, you, this year will get five points, which translates into six hundred dollars per point. And you guys average about fourteen, sixteen points per year. Um, you're gonna get five points just for your pay as you throw program. If you go to a cart, it's gonna go four, and it depends on the size of the cart, it's gonna go down to three. The other thing that there is to offer is grant money when it comes to the toders. There is an option to enhance your pay as you throw program with the toder and the state will cover that toder at thirty dollars per household. So this is, this is something that's gonna help the cost of those toders. It depends on if you want to go with the hauler for those toders or if you want to buy them out yourself. Once again, there's pluses and minuses to both. The minus is just going with the hauler is that at the end of the contract, they take them away. Now you've got to have the new company bring in toders and there's a transition period in that. And sometimes in transition period, there's some stormy water. So, and that's something that, you know, we have, we have to look at. If the town decides to buy the toders themselves and, and, and supply those, the benefit to any transition is that you don't have to worry about that. The toders are already there. Um, however, the downside would be that you have to take care of all the maintenance. So any broken wheels, lifts, you know, trash containers get damaged. In that case, what we'll do is we will write in the R P at the contract that if they're damaged because of negligence of the hauler, they'll have to replace them. However, you're still gonna have to take on the fact that you're gonna have Highway have to go out there and fix these, these containers as well. So that's the pluses and minuses. And there's a couple things that we do need to think about, but that's all stuff we can think about when, when we have a little bit of breathing room here to extending the contract.
Sure. Todd, I, I love the idea, um, but I, I would like to try to keep flexibility as far as sizing goes. I know you say other towns can pick up the thirty-fives and I've seen trucks pick up thirty-fives before. So whatever plan we would like to do, and I, I'll check with the board, but I'd like to make sure that the person, you know, the, the single, uh, you know, person at Halifax Estates with a thirty-five is not paying the same price as myself with a family of five with a larger one. So I would ask that we consider a plan that that is a sliding scale as to the size of the toder. And is that a popular option in the towns that you deal with?
It's a difficult option to deal with. Um, the programs have failed because of that. Um, the big one that comes to mind is Foxborough. They had a failed program because of something similar to that, but it wasn't just that. They also had an opt-in program, which isn't the best way to go. You always want to opt out. So those are two, a couple of factors there. Um, the other option, when you start supplying different sized containers to different people is you're gonna, once again, your, your trash per household is gonna go up and it's gonna cost you more. Ultimately, if you want to control costs, gain control with the amount of such, you know, half effect, you gotta really take size of the factor.
Sure. I'm just thinking about people that have private companies that have a, you know, again, these larger families that have the, the bigger, the sixty-fours or the, the forty-eights and then I feel like they're gonna be scared off by a thirty-five, you know, but, but I'm just trying to.
Todd, is there an option to keep it small for the smaller households that are single people, but then let the families maybe get more than one barrel? Even if it's a little bit of an additional cost?
That's a town decision. That's not up to me and I, that, we have to work that out with the hauler. It's, it's, it's between you and the hauler. So, um, as far as grant money, no. If, if you do, if, if there's any sixty-four gallons up there, you're not getting, you're not getting a penny of grant money on that. They completely obliterated that, that option. So.
Okay.
It's, you could do, this one, you could do your sixty-five gallon every other week. And that's the only other option there, but that, that, I believe that's three points.
You say that last part again?
Todd, can you say that last part again?
Yeah, so the other option would be do a sixty-four gallon, but every other week trash service.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's not, I don't know if that's realistic.
That's not realistic for people who have.
So as Todd was saying, one of the things we have to figure out is the billing. How would we handle the billing in-house, um, for that? And Ed had worked with, on the trash program for Pembroke and you were gonna get some information from Pembroke. Did you find out how?
Yeah, the, uh, billing costs about seven thousand a year.
Yeah, and did they do it with their real estate bill or?
No, they had a private company, uh, do it.
They had a private company do it.
And I got the information from the treasure collector, uh, last week. So, uh, you know, I think maybe the board should think about, you know, forming a, a committee, you know, going forward now that you made the decision to do the one-year deal. And then had this committee look at all of the options that Todd had just presented to you. And there's even more options than that, but, you know, it would, uh, you know, the town now has some time.
Sue Johnston, who works at our recycling center, is very knowledgeable. She works very closely with Todd. And she couldn't make it tonight, so that's why I'm standing. But, um, but she is, she's really good at working with the different companies and calling the different companies, finding out the different options. By doing the one-year extension, this gives us, because this, our contract is up June thirty. So we want to make sure we have no problems going forward.
So for tonight, I think the board needs to motion or give approval, so a motion to grant the one-year extension of this contract. And then on our future agenda item, Pam, whatever the next meeting is, let's talk about possibly forming a committee or people we would need to work this contractor. So I need a motion for the extension.
I make a motion to, to accept the extension for Waste Management for one year.
Sure, second?
I get a second, absolutely.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Todd.
You're welcome. You all have a good night.
You too.
Appreciate it. Just wave your hand over it.
I feel like it should be way fancier than what it is.
It's like Simon.
Right at six fifteen now.
Six fifteen?
Six fifteen. Steve Hayward is not here.
Not here yet?
All right, so we're gonna keep moving until Steve gets here. Uh, we have to award the gasoline and diesel contract.
And the abatement.
What?
And the abatement.
We already did that.
We did that.
You did?
Yep.
We're already on this.
Is that a test? Do we pass?
I'm already on constraints. Okay, so we had two bidders, Dennis K. Burke and East River Energy. Dennis K. Burke for gasoline, the total was three dollars and eighty-two cents. We're gonna round up there. And the diesel was five eighty-two. East River for gas was four dollars and diesel was six dollars and two cents.
Seems like a no-brainer to me.
Quite a difference in price between the two bidders. So we would need a motion to approve, I would imagine, we're gonna go with Dennis K. Burke.
Yes, we are. Can I make a motion to approve Dennis K. Burke as our gasoline and diesel fuel?
Who's our supplier now?
Um, I think it was Dennis Burke.
Okay, so the, uh, this is where I would ask Steve, but I'm assuming there's no issue with that in the past.
Yeah, I did ask Steve and he said he was.
He's been happy with him?
Yeah.
Okay.
And what happens is after a year, I do a follow-up with Steve and I ask Steve, hey, um, because they have, you know, it's a, it's a three-year contract, but every year we check in with Steve.
Mm-hmm.
Do you still want to continue the contract? And so next year, like April first, I'll ask him, do you want to continue the contract with him? And then he'll just send, well, yes, I do.
Okay.
And then we just, um, we again, we'll extend the contract.
I just want to make sure we're not being short-sighted and changing on him if he's had issues.
Yeah, no.
Okay. Um, sorry.
No, no.
A motion.
I mentioned I'd take a second.
I'm making a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, yeah, I don't know about that, Steve Hayward.
Make your brand express.
Steve, where are you?
Wow, look at you, just like on vacation or something?
Almost.
Almost, you're vacation mode?
Yeah, you guys ready?
We're, yeah, waiting on you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Like an honorary.
Thank you, sir.
That's why.
There's still one.
All right, boards, all yours, Steve.
All right, well, congratulations you two for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So as you see, I want to change, will not change. We have a new cremation garden. And that's the rules that I want to have for it. This first page is the, the rules, the settlement is how it's set up.
This looks really nice, Steve.
So just so you understand, the second page right here.
Mm-hmm.
If you flip over the, the rules, this is what I have right now.
Okay.
Which is just this part on the top.
Okay.
Okay.
The bottom right here. And over here is gonna be ground, uh, just a urn, so you can still go on the ground.
Okay.
So that, I haven't opened up yet, but when I do that, that's what these rules are.
So the, so the short list is current.
Short is for the current and the ground is, is the new, is the longer one here.
Right.
Okay.
Which hopefully will be by the middle of summer. I'll have that for you.
I know a lot, Steve, a lot of times with, um, with cemeteries and cremation gardens, as far as people leaving mementos and, and trinkets and stuff and is that?
No planted flowers, bushes or trees. Ventrums kind of a flag holder.
Put some stuff out there now and I've already talked to a couple of them to take it down and I've already told them, we'll be taking it off. We'll keep it at the barn for like six weeks or a month, whatever. And then we'll dispose it. I want to try to get all, these people at least with the cremation, they're fresh.
Yeah.
On the new.
Let them know.
So we have the addresses and phone numbers, so.
Okay.
And get ahold of the people, but it's still, it's tough because.
Yeah.
Somebody's passed away and you.
I get it. No, I absolutely get it.
When do you, um?
Where it's gonna be?
Nope, that's, that's gonna be for the, um.
What is this?
Paper roads. You'll see.
That's the next one, paper roads.
I'm, I'm jumping the gun here, I'm sorry. I went too far, Steve.
Cemetery.
I went too far, I was looking through math.
Um, when do you attach the flag holders for veterans?
After I find out that they're a veteran. Well, I usually know because I put the M on the marker.
Okay.
So I couldn't figure out how to attach them. And if you look at the picture there, you can see I cut one attachment.
Yep.
And actually, it sticks onto it, I have to cut the pole, and then I put the actual marker and the flag into that.
Is, do you, so right now, it's when they're interred?
Yes.
You add the flag?
Yeah, they usually have it when they bring men away. Usually the veteran agent takes care of that.
Okay. It might be something for the veteran agent, not for you, Steve, but I would ask that all the flags be reviewed and renewed prior to Veterans Day every year?
Yeah, well, they usually do it, yeah, he does it for Memorial Day, and then usually if something's torn up, he tries, it looks like he goes up to change it. And we have some agents re-changing.
Okay.
So you're looking for us to agree to the rules and regulations of the Halifax Central Cemetery Cremation Garden Rules and Regulations?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Bold set. Four, nine, open, second, five, so don't have to come back.
Okay. You don't like coming here to hang on this? So you're gonna say, you wanna come to our meetings, some kind of feeling slide here. So it would be a two-part thing. So I would need a motion to approve the Halifax Central Cemetery Cremation Garden Rules and Regulations, one through five.
Put the five on or not?
We'll do five.
She's doing the garden.
Oh, 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 okay, alright, alright.
Yeah.
Per Steve's request.
So what, so is there, I'm just, is there distinguished, because they're labeled the same thing, like, it's just as far as...
So he's saying this is the second phase, is that the right, yeah, so this is our first phase?
Sorry, initial phase. Alright, yeah, I make a, so moved on that motion.
So, all of them favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I would need a motion to approve the Halifax Central Cemetery Cremation Garden Rules and Regulations. I guess we could call it phase two, numbers one through nine.
So, sorry.
All of them favor, aye.
Aye. Looks good, Steve.
I have one more over the cemetery.
Okay.
Sorry. But if you notice a lot of stones out there are kinda thickened, and I've drawn a line, do I, cemeteries don't have the same foam. And they have a thicker base, which we only do so, we only do like a foot. I wanna start going down two, two and a half feet and one foot wide to make it so they're not sinking and tipping.
Okay.
But it's gonna cost more money, so that's what I'm gonna ask you about. I was gonna make some of these up, but...
Did you not give us that paper?
Plus I'm saving it free.
So can I see that?
Yeah. So basically, it's gonna, you charge seventy bucks basically right now, and it's gonna be going up to seventy-five, hundred fifty, one seventy-five, two hundred, two twenty-five. Depends on the size of the headstone.
Okay.
So it's like five, five dollars a pop, am I reading that right?
No, it's about... We used to go by square footage.
Sure.
Which is always the same, because we only have so many sized stones, that's why I did it this way.
Gotcha.
Basically, the bags of asphalt, I mean cement, cost about fourteen, fifteen dollars for a ninety-pound bag that we use.
Okay.
And that's how I'm going on.
Gotcha.
I had it all broken down, but like I said, I ran out of time.
You shut up right on time. So we would need a motion to approve the increase on headstones?
Headstone foundations.
Headstone foundations. Well, I mean, it's the cost of the headstone, right? Or no, just the foundation?
The foundation of it. So moved.
Sorry.
All of them favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, now let's go to this.
Now this fancy picture.
And all these great pictures that you take.
The pictures that you wanna look at is, wait, there are two pictures, that one.
You're a phenomenal photographer, by the way.
Some of myself, too.
Oh, the town hall?
Yeah.
Wow, what do you got?
So if you look on the map, I circled where I took the picture from on the, from was it the top picture? So I'm sitting on Fayette from Second Ave, or First Ave. So that would be where all the trees, I can see the houses are behind it.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's easy to view shortly, so. So Fayette?
So which way are you facing?
I'm facing this way right here.
You're facing this way.
This way.
So you're looking towards Grove Street?
Towards Second Ave.
Okay, and you are right here at First?
Right about, yeah.
So you're right about here?
Oh, right before the intersection.
Right before that circle.
Right here.
So as you can see from the picture, that Fayette just stops. And Second Ave goes along the trees right there. There's no Second Ave, that's, they're called paper streets for a reason, because it's only on the map, you can see it.
Ah.
But we're starting, we're starting to meet people in town, and they're all starting to complain, saying they want...
They'd like a street?
Yeah, but as you see, it's been like that forever. It'll never be, it will be wide enough to pave or become an accepted road. And I, most towns don't really, they wouldn't do paper streets, we still take care of some of them. So what I'm trying to find out what to do is, how do you wanna handle it?
How many?
I mean, if you look in the map, it's a house that's actually built along the streets.
Built on the street?
Right there.
Oh, yeah, help me.
Yeah, and this one.
So right, right here, the house is actually along the street.
This is what, this...
Well, we should pave that one.
Yeah, it's all cottages, all they did, they made the cottages into houses.
Sure, and there were more paths than streets, yeah.
So this right here is looking the other way at this.
Okay.
So I get called, every winter, these people, this house here is calling for us to plow this driveway, is what it is.
Sure.
So, I'm sorry, so this photograph, you just turned around?
Yeah, I came around to...
So now you're looking...
From, I came down Third Ave, and I'm sitting on Third Ave, going, taking the picture back at Second.
So this, so this roof is this house?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. So you're looking at both ends of what is called Fayette Street, here?
Got it.
Alright, so basically, this doesn't exist here.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And that happens.
And this is essentially a driveway.
I mean, you've gone down fifty-eight before, fifty-eight right here.
Yep.
Here's Lingan Street.
Yep.
This is supposed to be a paper street right here, Golden Peak.
Is that, is that a structure too?
That's a house, yeah.
Yeah.
So what are your solutions, thoughts, ideas, where, I mean, what do you, what are you asking, what do you want?
I think we should come up with some kind of a answer for anybody that comes to me to say, hey, what are you gonna do? I don't think we can really do anything.
Okay, so maybe that's a situation where we should have these people in a meeting with us?
Well, one of them, Gordon was talking to me before, and I thought he had come in, the guy from Second Ave.
How many paper streets do we have in town, ballpark?
Well, just look at this, and this is just the avenues.
So it's kinda, you're in a situation where how do you, how do you pick?
Right, and that's why most towns just wash their hands over it and don't do anything.
So you just want an answer to uniformly tell everybody?
Do we have a, say, anyone who'd like to say something?
I know that other towns are dealing, have been dealing with this problem as well, and I think that Hanson, I remember Charles looking into it in the past, and I believe that Hanson had been trying to go through a process to get rid of some of the paper streets and just accept the streets that have been paved and have been developed. Because we have a lot of neighborhoods, that's the avenues, but then we have also over by Go Street and Natty area that has the same issue, with paper streets that just were never developed.
And one got to.
Right, I think that the town should be looking into a way to solve the problem permanently, like, how do we go about...
Have a reply to these people that are always coming to Steve.
Right, or if they come to you, at least now you can see.
So you have no solution to do anything with those streets?
What could you do, I mean?
I know we can't pay them, but...
I can't even pay regular ones, now they want me to cut trees down and make a road, that's not gonna happen.
Not only that, but if you dissolve it on paper, what do you do with the land? I mean, this...
Well, when I go to court, they say it's usually a court case, is how they handle it. The neighbors have to go to court and...
The structure on Helpmate Street is in the street.
That's what I mean, so what do you do?
And half their house is on property that they don't even pay taxes on.
Right.
In the past, paper streets, it was, it was said that the people on the street owned to the mid-...
That's not true.
Well, that was in the past.
Yeah, that's not how it is though.
Yeah.
It sounds like we need some sort of...
I think we need some legal guidance on this.
As a saying, yeah.
I think we need to talk to Paul on this.
Just so you, enough anywhere, just because in case you guys have somebody that does come in and say, well, can the town do something? If you say, yeah, I'll do that for you.
Oh, yeah.
We would never agree to that without you, no way.
Pandora's box.
We tell everybody, you call Steve Hayward, and he has nothing to do with this.
Look for the guy in the fish shirt, he'll help you out.
Okay, so I would wanna move this to our next meeting, and let's talk with council.
It's just, sometimes, like, they don't even, like, a non-accepted road, or they won't even touch them anymore because of the liability and just the liability, basically.
Sure.
They won't plow them, they won't stand them, but if there's a call, I guess they, they'll go...
So what happens if you don't plow and stand, and there's like a medical emergency and you send fire or somebody else?
But if it's a non-accepted road that person bought on a non-accepted road...
These people still live here, though.
Oh, I understand, I don't, I'm not saying I agree with that, I'm just saying...
We have to come up with some kind of compromise or some kind of solution.
We need a plan.
And that's why I'm coming to you guys, to come up with some kind of, if we're on the same page.
Amy?
Amy.
So currently, right now, we have Helldalen over off of Hayward that has a subdivision approved, I think it was oh-four, oh-five, and it needs to be dissolved in order for it to go forward to something else that is being proposed right now. So I would say that the same thing would have to happen with any other developments, whenever they were. You can't just dissolve them, like, it would have to be a huge project.
Yeah.
It's very...
So Pam, let's add that to the next agenda, let's talk about Brook's hindrances, and then figure out what, where we go with that. Well, I mean, you'll be back from vacation by then?
When is it?
When's our next day?
Oh, yeah.
June fourteenth, I believe.
Only a week?
Yeah.
So what do you, um, we don't know what town they need that night.
Yeah, so let's just put it on your paper, and we'll figure, we have that later on in the agenda, so then we'll do the time, but I just don't wanna forget about it. Okay, and then what's your last thing, paving under driveways?
Yeah, that, I think the town should come up with some kind of a policy or maybe even a permit. I think you do a permit, or you do a permit, don't do any money, just that we have to go get a permit to get the driveway approved. Because if you look at all those pictures, the first one here, this first one, it's an old pincher, I mean, it's an old driveway, but that's how it should be connected, what they did, they made a keyway when they did the driveway. And then they attached the driveway, so it's like attached to the other pavement. What they're doing now, and you can see what's happening, they just laid it on top of the asphalt, went on the road, we're plowing.
Ripping it all up.
And we rip up the road, I mean, their driveway, now they're calling me to fix it.
Right.
I think this is something we should bring up to the traffic safety committee, maybe?
Would it be the plan, who's in charge of having them, when they build the driveways? Like on the new one, usually the new ones, they do pretty fit, it's when they do the oval, they have an older driveway.
I'm not sure.
So I don't mind if I have to go and take a look to say, yeah, do it this way or don't do it this way.
I mean, it's something we should bring Jim on to.
I just noticed on my home the other day, they did that driveway over on one oh-six.
One oh-six, near the fire hydrant there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In the, just an oval of the burn, so that burn is gonna get tore up probably when we plow.
Alright, so this might be another one that we'll move to that meeting, do some research on, figure out who should be... Make sure we're doing, going through the rate.
I've been, I've been to Howie's before, he had two or three people that actually called, and I went up and took a look before they did the driveways. They wanted to ask if it was okay.
Yeah.
But that's it, nobody else...
I'm surprised you're that big. I know, everyone just does their driveway, they don't check it or anything.
They paved around the hydrant.
Yeah, I saw that.
Oh, on twelve?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, so...
Yeah.
Alright, so let me figure out the right process and chain command there.
Do you know, Steve, do other towns have any sort of, you know, check-in policy or...
I haven't talked to them, but I went on their website, they do have a permit that they're supposed to get before they do the driveway.
Okay.
But it's one of those things, it's a new thing, and who's gonna...
Yeah, who's in charge of it, right, who's gonna enforce it?
If that's where we're getting permits from, that's where the permits come from, that department.
Sure.
That's probably something we should bring them in on.
And again, don't view it, it's not a monitor, not looking to make any money, just make sure that it gets done correctly.
That one there, I took a picture before the winter, because I knew they were gonna tear it up when we plow.
Yeah.
Have you taken a picture since?
That one we didn't tear, it was bad as a couple of years.
Good job, good job.
You're getting better.
And all, just lucky.
Okay, so we'll move on. So I got?
Well, yeah, so I have fixed some of these without the town's money. And that's why I wanna come here, because I had a couple of this ones that they got tore up, and after I went and looked at them and took a picture of it, it definitely was the asphalt.
The installer's fault.
Right, you can see it up on Oak Street.
Yeah.
And I actually, I took a picture of that, the guy actually plowed his own driveway, and I thought that's what he, which one was it? This, the last one on the page is, he did it.
Yeah.
That driveway's been down there for three years, and this year it actually tore off.
Yeah.
But when I went and took the picture, it had all the asphalt on one side, and I saw it plowing back in his driveway. So when I called him, I asked him if he plowed himself, and it looked like he just pushed it off and went like a nut, but then when I went back, I looked, it was definitely a truck. So, but that's one of those, do you have any kind of a policy, how we're gonna do?
Yeah, I think we need a policy.
I said, yeah, fix it this time because...
Because we don't have a policy.
Right.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah. I like that idea, actually, of circling back and, you know...
And let's talk to the right people.
Talk to who we need to talk to.
Don't step over anybody, everybody else's job, so. Alright, well, that's it, have a good vacation.
Enjoy. Don't have too much fun.
I know, it's only last...
Really? Oh, cool.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Very cool.
Why am I wearing that shirt?
Huh?
Steve's gonna be cold.
Sorry, I hadn't been talking, that was my first comment.
We haven't, well, we don't know yet, you never know what the weather's gonna be, but one of the trips I went on from the casino.
Good for you, that's awesome. Luck be a lady.
So we're a little late, Lori, I'm sorry, it's at six-thirty, for Lori Costa Klein to talk about the Pride Day update.
Thank you, thanks for hearing from me. So a couple things, we've, we were able to find a disc jockey after a little effort. So we are definitely gonna need a live entertainment permit, and I'm assuming, and we intend that, aren't we?
Yeah, we intend that.
Okay, that'll be great. So we do have court of bodies, however, we're anticipating, I think we have twenty-five vendors right now.
Awesome.
Yeah, so we're anticipating it may draw a bit of a crowd. We've been in touch with HPD, we have not secured a detail, but after talking to the chief, he'd said we could let them know, probably like in forty-eight hours.
I would imagine we're probably gonna need one.
But we're, yeah, I think at this point, we will.
And the sooner the better, because with our shortage on police right now, I wanna give them as much of a heads up as possible if they could do that. And the sooner the better, because with our shortage on police right now, I wanna give them as much of a heads up as possible if they could do that.
That's fair, that's fair. And we've actually, um, we've had some folks donate to fund the event. So I think we actually have funds that would give beta now, which will be good. Um, so that's the other thing. Um, we have had a request from a couple vendors for electricity. Um, so we're wondering if we can use the town hall electricity and if there's a fee or something that we can pay the town for that.
I don't.
Usually just with the live entertainment request, you can just say the values outdoor, um, we don't usually charge anybody because I'm time for the, um, sure, barbecue, they've used it.
Yeah, I know, when we've done hops events there, um, we've filled out the form and you can check a spot that says electric, you know what, electricity.
Okay, yeah, well, you know, again, we live in a municipal building, I wasn't sure how that works.
Um, I think though that our next meeting is cutting it really close to this one, right? Your event's eighteenth, our meeting is the fourteenth.
The eighteenth, yeah.
Turn me to the fourteenth.
Right.
Yeah, alright, so.
Do you?
Well, I can do, I can, I'll email her the form, she can fill it out.
Do, do you wanna give it to me? I can fill it out now if you.
I have to, I can shoot it, yeah.
Alright, sorry.
We can make a motion to approve the live entertainment license based on it being filled out properly and handed back into Pam.
I love that idea.
Just so we're not holding you up on that.
That's great.
Just with everything going on in this world and making town meeting, everything that's happened, the last thing I want is for us to call you on the fourteenth and go, oops, we can't have our meeting, sorry. And you not have your live entertainment.
I appreciate that, truly.
So, um, I would look for a motion to approve the live entertainment with the use of the outdoor electric, um, based on Lori getting everything filled out with Pam and the chief being event proper.
Before you make the motion, can I ask one more question?
Yeah, sure.
Um, so we have some entertainers that have asked about, um, like singers and what to ask, ask for a space to warm up. Um, and we're wondering if we can use the town hall, um, indoor space for that, not for the general public, just for our entertainers. Like if we have anything that they can do inside the building. Um, I don't, um, think, I don't think they have to, I'll have to take a look.
I'm not doing that again, I don't wanna know before we say yes. I'm sorry.
I appreciate it, I appreciate it.
Um, so that would have nothing to do with the live entertainment anyways and the electrical, so let's get that approved. Um, and then we're gonna, I wanna double check the calendar, I wanna double check that, I don't wanna put our feet in our mouth. So still looking for a motion to approve that based on, um, it being filled out properly and given into Pam and Pam making sure it's all set.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. And then as far as town hall access?
Yeah, we did, uh, make sure that, one, there's nothing going on up there that day, like, so rea- realistically, everything's gonna be blocked on a Saturday except for the selectmen, I mean, the great hall?
I was just gonna, um, say, usually the rental of the great hall is through the clerk's office.
Right.
And if they rent the great hall, I assume that somehow there's access to it.
Access to it.
Right.
So would it be good for me to come tomorrow?
And talk to Sue?
To the, yeah, to see what the rental would be.
Yeah, so I would talk to Sue in the town clerk's office.
Okay. We can, we can manage that, I think here it's pretty inexpensive.
Yeah.
Let's try.
And I don't think we have to approve that, so.
No, we'd be surprised.
Just Sue, yep. And then she'll have the calendar, she'll have all that stuff for you too.
Yeah.
That's awesome, great.
Anything else for us?
I don't think so, just would welcome you all to come, it's gonna be a really fun, family-friendly event and, um, yeah, some good information tables.
Whatever we can do to help, please let us know.
Bake sale table.
Uh, in the.
Um, I heard about these cookies, bake sale table, my daughter was obsessed with the ones from Saturday, I sent you the picture.
I did, I loved it.
She was in love with it, she thinks it's the best cookies I ever had, I was like, I will let her know.
High praise, love it, thank you.
Uh, total side note, great job on the buzz off.
Yeah.
Uh, thanks, yeah, we're working on it.
So it was hot, but it was good. I hope you had a good turnout. Alright, is that all you have for us, Lori?
I think so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Lori.
Thanks, Lori.
Alright, so, um, back to this.
Back to our list.
FMLA.
Alright, we're gonna check in, we're gonna have what I guess?
Request.
We did the bit, but we need to sign this?
No, what I do is I send a letter.
Perfect. Um.
Do you have this info on this one too?
Yeah, we're not gonna, yep, yep, I figured. So I am looking for a motion to approve a FMLA request. That's pretty much it.
Alright, alright, yeah, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Alright. Yeah, can I just take a look at, what I moved?
Um, selectmen monthly status report, current building product, so elevators and police station in HES. Are you on this?
Sure.
You, you wanna talk about this or no?
No, you, you don't wanna read it.
It's just.
Um, elevators, police station and elementary school, Mr. Matron has been informed by the elevator company that the elevators will fail inspection in June. There is a new code that has to do with the fire service key and these elevator, that these elevators need, the cost is five thousand dollars to bring them up to code. Town hall doesn't have the fire service key, so no repairs are necessary.
So it's just the, the elementary school and the police station?
Thank you.
And its estimated cost of five thousand dollars?
For both or each?
Each.
Okay. Alright, the town hall ramp, the ramp has been ordered for seventeen thousand two hundred dollars and does not include demo of the current ramp or the concrete side needed for the foot of the ramp. Mr. Matron will do the demo of the ramp. So nice.
Right on.
You're amazing. Fire station bay door, spring in the overhead door, it says replace, it doesn't need to be replaced, was it replaced?
Was replaced.
I give, okay. Alright, oh, so we need to figure out where we're gonna come up with ten thousand dollars to fix the elevator? And all those one?
Five thousand for us, five thousand from the school.
From the school? Should we let the school know that?
We can insert a fund transfer request.
Okay.
Or I can.
So can we put that together for the next meeting so we can approve that? And then would we let the school know that they're gonna have to?
Can we approve one now or no?
Yeah, okay.
No, it's just gonna do that.
Finance screen, gotcha, it's a new guy, sorry.
Alright, road openings. Am I going here? Don't waste a cent on course a lot of times. So we need a motion to approve the road openings for thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-six and thirty-nine Colby Drive.
Go ahead, Ian.
What do you mean road openings?
Uh, sorry.
It's a ever source, they wanna, they wanna cut for access, it looks like.
Four by six road cuts to do gas maintenance. Yeah, so I guess they're just gonna cut down that street. In front of those other, so gas.
Is there a, um, I shouldn't have, what, I don't know this, is there a moratorium after new pavement in town for road openings?
There is, um, I, what I do is I get a sign off from, um, there's plans, a lot of these streets, a lot, I'll say Steve, Steve, does that have a new road? Well, I know Colby Road, I know South Street wasn't one time and now it's not, so I use the last.
Did I have, okay. So, according to this, there'll be a detail officer or there'll be a requested a detail officer?
Yeah, I think it's gonna be one, they're doing it all, one day, there's one detail, you know what I mean? Cause they're right next to it, I know it's on a trend.
The building inspector okayed it with trench permits, uh, police will need a detail, highway okayed it, water okayed it and conservation okayed it. So, I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So, let's sign these. We'll have to sign all four of these, so. And then back. Thank you.
Yeah.
Like, are you gonna do that song? That's the streets, Amy, what they're doing. That's what they're trying to do on Colby Drive.
There you go, big boy.
In case you're interested. I, I know, but I saw you perk up. Alright, so that is yours. Okay, use of town green for the COA July fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, Darlene, do you wanna speak on it?
Uh, yes, so we have the Mass Cultural Council grant that we're using for, uh, a general equipment as a guitarist. And it's a big problem, fifty people, maybe, maybe sixty. Um, we have a, you know, a tent that will be set at half past, and, um, I wish Scott will be able to keep that for us.
So it's a Friday, right, in town? Friday? Is it Friday?
I believe it is, yeah. I think so. This one will love it too.
Thank you, that was my next up.
Yeah, so it's a, it'll be early, um, we may have an ice cream shop or some.
I hope so.
Maybe some type of a green.
Okay.
Great.
So it should be a, a nice event, so we got, uh, you know, using the Mass Cultural Grant, um, and also to some other things we can add to.
Do we have anything on the green?
You have a picture? I have.
Oh, you have a picture? So there's nothing on there?
We did.
Okay, so we have no conflict on our schedule.
Do you, just curious, Darlene, do you have a rain date? Is it a rain or shine or?
Um, well, actually, no, I don't have a rain date, but, you know.
If you get the tent, you're probably alright.
Yeah, I'm, I'm anticipating good weather, I hope.
That's it.
We'll, we'll find, we'll, we'll look at it, we'll, I'll be back, just in fact, there's an issue.
Okay.
Uh, is there a motion to approve the use of town green for the COA on July fifteenth, twenty twenty-two?
So moved.
Second, totally stepped away.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, we're working on it, we'll make it, we'll get somebody there.
Alright. Correspondent from Silver Lake, Silver Lake Regional School District.
Yeah.
So the first one's from May first, we received it May first. On March seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, the Silver Lake Regional School District Committee voted to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year operating budget of twenty-eight thousand, no, twenty-eight million, sorry, I didn't get that one.
That'd be a good deal.
But look, look at where that is.
I know, it's harder than.
So there's a dot there, not a comma, for the record, not me.
It's true.
Twenty-eight million, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars at the amount deemed necessary for the operating cost of the regional schools. It's further approved the reduction of the operating cost by funds estimated on hand, ten million, one hundred, twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. And set amount to be assessed to member towns at eighteen million, one hundred, thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-two cents as the net amount required for operating costs. Additionally, on March seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, the Silver Lake Regional School District Committee approved the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year budget of one million, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars, thirty-eight cents as the amount deemed necessary for the construction costs of the regional schools. The Silver Lakes Regional School District Committee voted that the total amount to be assessed for operating and construction costs to member towns to be set at nineteen million, six hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars. You are hereby notified that the sum of nine million, five hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents, of which four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety, you tend to exempt from the limitation of MGL chapter fifty-nine, section twenty-one. Proposition twenty-one and a half, two and a half, see, that's not me, I wrote it the other way.
Yep.
Is due and payable in four equal payments of one million, three hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-one cents, honor before the fifteenth day of July and October, twenty twenty-two, and the fifteenth day of January and March, twenty twenty-three, that is being proportionate share of your town. That's a phenomenal letter. Um, additionally, there's still an additionally, sorry. On March seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, and April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, the Silver Lake Regional School District Committee approved the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three capital budget for five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars as the amount deemed necessary for the capital plan for long-term equipment, building and grounds improvement and maintenance for regional schools. It is further, further approved the use of five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars of E and D funds to pay the regional school fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three capital budget. So that is from John Tuffy, treasurer, and Joe Brew.
You got it?
Yeah, you wanna read that one?
Oh, here we go.
Mister, I know.
I'm a clerk, I'm just a clerk here, I don't know. Alright, this is from the, uh, Silver Lake Regional School District, uh, dated April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, received May fourth, May the fourth, be with you, twenty twenty-two. Dear members of Halifax Board of Selectmen, I would like to inform you that the Silver Lake Regional School Committee has con- has been contacted by Jim Hickey, selectman for the town of Hanson and chairman of their de-regionalization feasibility study committee. The town of Hanson is considering terminating their existing relate, regionalization agreement with the town of Whitman and is exploring alternatives for their schools. Jim has requested a meeting with the appropriate parties to have a high-level discussion regarding the possibility of Hanson joining our regional school district. The town of Hanson is in infancy of exploring options and many steps would need to be success, need to successfully happen before they would be able to make any change they are considering. I welcome input from you regarding our response to this request. I would suggest we arrange a meeting with the town of Hanson representatives and include members of the board of selectmen and finance committees from each of our three towns, as well as Dr. Prue, our superintendent, and the Silver Lake School Committee. I am sure there are other key people to include in any such meeting and we can certainly extend invitations as appropriate. I am happy to coordinate or assist in the coordination of a meeting. I look forward to hearing from you. Best regards, Paula Hatch, Silver Lake Regional School Committee Chair.
Wow, that's interesting.
That is interesting.
I'd be curious to hear what they have to say, I mean, knee-jerk reaction is, no, I was kidding, knee-jerk reaction is, okay, let's set it up, I guess, right?
Well, I mean, you can always listen. Can always listen. Yeah, we'd have to.
And aren't they part of Whitman?
They'd get created.
Well, they're in Whitman hands, they're not.
The Whitman hands are regional.
So that's a lot.
So they're gonna dissolve that, Hanson's gonna move to Silver Lake instead of.
I mean, Pembroke was part of us at one point, I guess, but, okay, so I guess we should reach out to Paula?
Put a letter together?
We had put a letter together that we would be interested in entertaining a meeting as our board.
Do, do we wanna, I guess we say the worst we can do is listen, but do we want to, I guess, want to entertain the meeting?
I mean, I think we should hear everything.
Okay.
Cause financially, we are sucking wind with our district right now, so maybe this could help us? I don't know, it wouldn't hurt to listen.
Sure.
With Kingston and how much they are over building right now, maybe it would be a seed to be a solution.
Halifax Hanson and get out of Kingston, that would be pretty cool.
Because Kingston, I mean, like, look at them all, you see that, and like, and now they're tearing down the old war spams, that's why, you know, we would be careful about all that cluster housing and all that.
Sure, Halifax Hanson.
H H, H H P?
H H, yeah, H H High School, could be interesting.
No, you're right, we should, we should at least.
I feel like we should entertain the meeting, that's up to you.
Yeah, sure, I agree.
So can we put a letter together to Paula that the board would be willing to entertain a discussion? And if she wants to facilitate that, like she said in the letter, that would be great, and to let us know, please. And thank you. Ah, Sandy, so I need to hear the ARPA statements.
So, um, after I spoke with you, I did call Tom O'Brien from the Ganting. And he said that the second half of the ARPA funds that we are expecting is being held up, but he believes it will only be a temporary holdup, he believes we will be getting it in June.
Okay.
And it's the federal government, it's, that's, um, some of the, I believe, senators who were saying that. Maybe we shouldn't send it, but he said it was a minority of senators who were, who were doing it, he believes it will go through.
So when was the date that we were supposed to issue that?
We were supposed to get the, um, the sec-, I, I believe that we were supposed to get the second half in April.
In April, but when were we gonna issue it on the checks to the boys?
In July.
In July, right?
Right, so I would do it until we're sure we get them a link.
Perfect, so let's, let's just hold off on that, let's, um, let's put, kick that to the next agenda, Pam. Just, maybe we'll have an update in the next couple of weeks and make sure we don't do anything about that, please. Signature authority, we already did.
Already did.
Hiring of new TA, so I spoke with Bernie Lynch literally walking in this building. He has three, if not four, potential town administrator candidates. So next Wednesday, the first, we will have a meeting at four o'clock to interview the four candidates and speak with Bernie and hopefully we'll have a TA soon. No offense, I, we love you. I know you don't wanna, I know you don't wanna stay forever, I know you don't wanna stay forever.
It's wow, wow, wow.
June first, Wednesday, at four. Um, fire chief discussion.
Do you want to sit in on those interviews, by the way?
What?
Yes, I'd sit in on our interviews.
Yeah, Bernie's gonna conduct, Bernie's gonna conduct the actual interviews and the board will be here with any secondary questions or follow-up.
Okay.
Um, but yeah.
Sure.
It's that way if you know any of them, you're like, no, just, we're gonna, we're gonna come up with a new, like, don't do that, yeah.
Just grab, yeah, grab your ear.
Do like a cough, don't do it, yeah. Um, so we received a letter, it's not dated, but it says, dear board, I'm ready to inform you that I intend to resign from my position as Halifax Fire Chief Emergency Management Director on June first, twenty twenty-two. I truly appreciate the opportunity to have served the great community for the last eight years, I couldn't be prouder of what this department has accomplished during the time and will forever, will be forever grateful to the men and women of Halifax Fire Department for their support and commitment to the public safety. Please let me know if I can be of any assistance during the transition process. So, um, we kinda saw this coming, so it was put on the agenda, but we couldn't go into detail about it because we didn't get this before the forty-eight hours. Therefore, we're holding a meeting tomorrow that was already posted yesterday to speak with the fire chief with a potential interim and to go over the process of recruiting the new fire chief. So that's the update on that.
I just would like to be on record too, saying it's a big loss for the town and, uh, like to thank Jason for his time, he was.
We're gonna get him tomorrow, he's gonna be here with us.
He's gonna be here? Alright, cool.
Yeah, though, we should send a thank you letter from the board, it's gonna be a beautiful written letter, Pam. If you can put that together and Jonathan will sign it, we'll send our noble thank you letter and all that. Uh, more of the parade update, so I've been working with Steve Littlefield on this. We had brought the essay, um, competition back with, I think it was only fifth and sixth grade. We invited all the kids to march, so each grade level will have a banner with their grade and all the kids in the town from the Halifax Elementary are able to attend or march in the parade if they want to. We will be marching this year, so be ready and let's coordinate, queue up it. And, uh, we have to be at the golf course at, I believe, nine thirty, hold on, just wanna double check. Oh, it'd be there at nine. Oh, it'd be there at nine. Double check that. Nine o'clock.
Awesome.
Um, Pam, you already posted for us?
Yeah, I did.
Thank you.
It'll be nine thirty though.
Oh, well, we're gonna have to back it up to nine. We can do it tomorrow because it's not till Monday. Um, which reminds me, I'll have the names of all, not the back, but I'll have the names of everything for the agenda for the first because Monday's the holiday and Friday we're not here, so we're gonna need to post it Thursday. Yeah, so I'll make sure I have it to you in the morning. I asked him to get it to me tonight. If not in the morning, as soon as I have it, I'll get it to you. Um, okay, so I think it's gonna be really good this year. Steve's done a great job. He has music and band and he's really done a phenomenal job this year putting us together, so I'm really excited to have the parade back.
Hmm.
Um, I think it'll be good to, for the community. Um, cable contract discussion. Caesar, is that why you're here?
Yeah, you said you wanted to do something.
Oh, yeah, we talked about this. So Plimpton is getting Fios. Hanson has Fios. We're not happy with Comcast. I want to look into how these other towns are doing this and how we work on that, which I guess where you come in.
You'd like to go on with the town administrator job with the Cable and River Committee, but I usually say no with.
Yeah, my conversation with Mr. August yesterday is that he is starting negotiations with Comcast right now.
Okay, well, how do we talk about Fios? Because I think that's gonna be way better.
Well, I think I'll just tell Mr. August to have a meeting with you folks.
Especially now that we have these surrounding towns kicking in on it.
Who's Mr. August? I'm sorry. Who is Mr. August?
He's the attorney general on negotiations for the town.
Um, yeah, if we can set up a meeting, because I, if he has a pros and cons or a reason why we shouldn't, I would like to hear it. Caesar, if you can be there for that. I think it's important that we're looking at all options because I know that the community as a whole wasn't really happy with Comcast and they were just being told that it was our only option, so if we can come up with a different option, I think that's a good.
Be happy to contact him and set up something with you.
Absolutely. Competition is a good thing.
Yeah, a little jealousy, never heard anybody.
No.
Alright, so town administrator report, Ed.
Um, you've got a memo from, from me regarding some funds that have been uh forwarded to the town. Um, I'm still trying to track down the, the first one at House Bill forty-seven twenty in which the town shall get two hundred and fifty thousand to be expended by the town to support local economic recovery. Now, this comes from a uh, letter from the governor regarding COVID funds that the state received. And if you just see that one little line on page three of my report where it just says provided further, and this is typical of stuff that you get from the legislature where it just says one little line like that. About two hundred and fifty thousand shall be expended.
I know. It's an expensive little line. Let's figure it out.
So anyway, so I gotta call into Representative Cutler's office because I know Cole Angley real well and uh, you know, to find out more about that. And the other ones are earmarks that are normal for the legislature due. Um, one is that, and, and I really want to talk to Scott about this, about the replacement of water fountains with water bottle refill stations. So were you behind that?
I was not.
Okay, anyway.
I, I made inquiry about, about it, but.
Right, so the towns received twenty thousand dollars to replace the water fountains in town buildings, so.
Yeah, but how much is it gonna cost for us to do that?
Pardon?
How much is it gonna cost for us to do that?
Well, having that chance to talk to Scott.
So we've got two in town hall.
Okay.
Uh, and then we have to go to other buildings from there. I think the only other building we have is the police station.
Right. I just want to make sure that it makes sense. Yeah.
Schools are down there.
Yeah.
Schools down there, I've seen them at the school. Maybe we could look at which ones are the, I mean, how do you quantify which are the most popular spots, you know? It's hard. I'll stand there with a clicker and just clicking.
Sounds like a really good research project.
Make it, make it Johnson Seale Water.
There you go.
Are there any other implementation plans for those funds? Like, is there any other stipulation on anything that we need to do in order to get those funds? Or are there any paybacks?
You know, usually we get a contract from the state and uh, we have a uh a secretory line item and I put down our town accountant to handle the paperwork for that particular earmark. Um, we haven't seen anything from, uh, in your packet. There's a letter from both our state reps regarding the other two earmarks. One from the, for the public library and the other for the council on aging. And then uh, there is a, and then we received word which you, the last item that you have in your packet is from uh the governor, lieutenant governor on DOT letterhead regarding the uh, winter recovery assistance program. And uh, this is part of, I believe, the COVID program. But anyway, the town's gonna get, uh, its apportionment is a hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-four based on its uh, mileage of fifty-two uh, town miles. So uh, and I'll be talking with the highway surveyor regarding that one.
Thank you. Thank you, Ed.
That's my report.
You're great. Um, we have future meetings going on. We talked about this.
Okay.
Obviously, we have meetings that have popped up like tomorrow and next Wednesday and things that become time sensitive that we can't get around. And that's just what happens.
Yeah.
But our regularly scheduled meetings. I know you want to talk about a start time on it.
Yeah, I would just like to look into, I know before we were having them at around six thirty. Um, and I think that's a, a good time to shift these back to, just to give people, I expect people to be able to come here. Everybody's schedules are crazy.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so um, I think it would be in the town's best interest. I know we are, we have our schedules too, but to offer it at a time where it's conducive for people to be able to get here.
I agree, a hundred percent.
Um, the also thing I'd like to work on is, is consistency. And I know earlier it was, you know, because of COVID, we were doing a lot of um, online meetings and that, so you can be flexible with that, but uh, we're doing more in person to um, try to offer a consistent time and day of the calendar.
Right, well, we'll always hold our two Tuesday meetings and we can do those at six thirty, that's fine.
Hmm.
But there are things that are gonna come up that we're gonna have to do.
Unavoidable, absolutely.
Um, unfortunately, that's just how it shakes out sometimes.
Time-sensitive nature that we'll have to do, sure.
So six thirty on our two Tuesdays? Um, we need to approve a cemetery? I think we already did, but. We just have to sign it? Maybe better? Let us for you guys to sign.
Okay.
I don't, this didn't make the agenda, Scott, because I didn't see it in the file. Okay. Okay. Okay, so I think unless you want to double check me, Alex and Jonathan, that we made through the whole agenda and we have executive session now?
We, we did.
I can breathe, serenity now.
So I would look for a motion to go into executive session to discuss contract negotiations for police chief and fire chief as discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining in an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town and the chair does so despair to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices and strategies with respect there too. And to discuss the twelve taxable inhabitants of the town of Halifax versus town Halifax as discussing strategy with respect to litigation in an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the litigating purpose of the town. And we will not come back to our regularly scheduled meeting. We will adjourn from executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? You have the role call it. Alex.
Aye.
Jonathan.
Aye.
And I am the S.